Bring this meeting to order, please stand for the.
Pledge of Independence to the right behind the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every king and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here tonight. I have to guess. So. We'll move on to. 4.01. This is the point in the meeting for comments on matters not already on the agenda, comments in agenda. Don't usually do that at the end. What's that? Do you want to do them? Okay. No, 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 no. Well, do your recognitions. No, that's fine, yeah. Do we have any recognitions?
I'll start. Of course we will. Bucket pillars, month of September. Matthew Paul, Eli Goodhart, Brooklyn Pedraza, Izzy Van Ruth, Daniel Clankie, Joya Morlock, Philip Dennis, Gabe Dudley, Rachel Dennis, Lincoln Carlson, Gavin Berthust, Rachel Petros, Esme Schaus, Aleah Colbert, Serenity Coats twice, Miles Johnson, Maggie Ridge Bear, Rome Brighted Hair, Aurora Yellow Robe twice, and Wyatt Peterson, Atlas Paples, Carly Pedraza, and Caleb Griffin. Thank you.
I guess I used to like blowing this up and forgot my glasses, so. Down here. Sorry.
Your arms gotta get longer.
Asa Kano Farmer, Ethan Real Bird twice, Ben Hostner, Annie Kirchner, Zeth Madricole, Kayah Sherman, Harrison Bull, Cooper Clark, Nina Watson, Urban Elliott, Jacob Willoughby, Kason Yellow Robe, John Burns, Kason Yellow Robe again, and Zeth Madricole, Aiden Wyckoff, Tyke Small, and September Student of the Month was Annie Kirchner for sixth grade, Ethan Real Bird for seventh grade, and Harrison Bull for eighth grade.
Our September attendance competition, seniors one, ninety-five point five-three percent, juniors ninety-four point nine-six, freshmen ninety-four point three-six, and sophomores ninety-four point two-three. I was excited they were all well, ninety percent. September Student of the Month awards, freshman Britten Steer, sophomore Catherine Bell, junior Abby Vincent, then senior Kaden Staples. Rosewood County Public Health is sponsoring the Be a Buddy Not a Bully Award. So September's winner was Vayple Small. She's an extremely hardworking student, kind of all, she'll receive a certificate and a fifty-dollar Amazon gift card for Rosewood County Public Health.
Perfect.
I want to do a shout out to the middle school football coaches. That group is awesome. They work together good, they teach the kids and keep them safe. And it was just a great year, they have their last game tomorrow, they did a little banquet this weekend, but they're a great group and I really appreciate having them at the middle school.
There are a lot of kids out there in that program.
Yeah.
And well, I've all just finished their season too, Saturday, done an amazing job too, the coaches there, and of course cross-country finishing, so one more game for football. We'll move into basketball, I'm sure you did that for your court, but excited for that, and wrestling next week.
Wrestling next week? I'm surprised I got a wrestler coming up this week.
I'm trying now.
You ready? So, not me, mom needs to get ready. All right, we'll move that, we'll move on to 4.0, public participation. This is the point in the meeting for comments on matters not already on the agenda, comments in agenda should be accepted when that comes up during the meeting. Interested persons may also submit views and reform to the clerk or superintendent prior to the meeting. Those comments will be brought to attention before during the meeting. Do we have any correspondence or public participation? Okay. Consent agenda?
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I'll take that. Motion second. Francis.
Hi.
Sabrina.
Hi.
Angie.
Hi.
Tiff.
Hi.
Hi.
I just wanted to note that the, I could open the consent agenda at home, but I cannot open it here. Can you open it here? Is it attached? Because mine is not.
Yeah, none of mine are opening, they were opening at home, yeah, okay.
We don't have word on our Chromebooks.
I asked Evan if he could get words, so if this ever happened again, he said it's not that easy, but he was gonna try. It's something to do with Google and Chromebooks and.
Yeah, so if we could just make sure that that's updated so that in our minutes that the public can access that, that would be great.
Yeah, mine's downloading there.
I think we just need to make sure they're put in as PDFs.
Yeah.
Yeah, what are these, put in?
So the minutes are PDFs, right? None of mine are either.
I just opened the minutes, and so I think it's something with the internet.
I think it's the program, because he just clicked on it and he got this, oops, this page you're looking for isn't here.
For me either, I thought.
So I know they're PDFs, especially the minutes, because I do those, but as far as.
I opened them today, just fine.
I did too, at home.
And you were using a Chromebook?
And I can't, I can't open mine at home anymore either. And I had them open earlier today, mine is saying oops, so there might be a problem.
Are all of our attached, nothing's gonna open now?
No.
No. That's everything, because.
Everything just went down.
Yep. Hey Bill.
Hi, how's it going? I'm busy, I'm running a meeting.
Yeah.
Do you want a hard copy agenda? I have it printed.
There should be some back there too, go with the attachment, sure.
Do you want me to go make, can I go to, is the boardroom open, or do you want me to go? Oh, wait, hold on a minute. Let's have them make copies.
Yeah, we've never had these as hard.
One, two, three, four, five, six. Yeah.
I kind of doubt it, there's like a million policies, but this is always, stuff is always the same. Yeah, so there's, it's. Oops, the page you're looking for isn't here.
It's just policies that I have, it's not like the letter recommendations, but they're noted on here.
Okay.
Yours isn't working either, is it?
No.
It's timing, perfect timing. Well, we got the outline. Is it four docs?
Yeah. Because you can't even get into the, if you go out, I logged out and came back, I can't even get into that screen.
Don't leave your screen, Scott, that way you can see the.
Okay, I was gonna see if it.
Yeah, well, for some reason, yeah, she knows you're out, out.
Not going nowhere.
Luckily, most of the policies are sitting readings.
Oh, wait, I, I don't know. I know I looked. Well, I got this going on here, and then it tried to show me the agenda again, and it went right back to. No. There's one that's first, it had to do with, because that forms, because that was in Word last time. Well, while she's doing the, the copies, we can talk about the Board of General, there's not much on October.
Okay.
So unless there's something.
It's just the, where I looked at it, it was the Indian Ed for All report, I think, it's in here.
Yeah, we've moved that to this month from.
Yeah, that was what was on our October.
By the way, it just said regular board items. We have regular meeting items. There's not much there, so nothing to get to concern about, and then we have no whole business. So when Jake gets back, we'll, we'll move into. I could probably do the business, I'll make the hiring.
Yeah, we can do it.
We can do it, we can probably do that. 9.01, maybe not affiliated. It takes me a second now, because I was looking at some policies. But I know it's the nurse, we're recommending district nurse. Emily Maron. And her wage, mine isn't coming up now, it's really slow. Twenty-nine fifty.
4.01, is that what that?
4.01.
I move the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approve Emily Maron, district nurse, for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented. Second.
Okay, motion second, any public comment on this agenda item? Any further board? Francis.
Hi.
Sabrina.
Hi.
Tiff.
Hi.
Angie.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm right here.
Okay. And then 9.02 is classified. I think that's a. Yep, I've got two, so I'll do one at a time. Sure. Okay, Amy Quinlan recommended for bus driver at twenty-nine dollars and sixteen cents.
I move the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approve Amy Quinlan for bus driver for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented.
Twenty-nine dollars and sixteen.
Okay, motion second, any public comment on this agenda item? Any further board?
Oh, sorry, yeah, just that Amy's worked for the district before, she's got her, not only her senior, but her bus endorsement. We'll see how quick we can get her here and get somebody to, I mean, she knows some of the routes, because she's worked here before, but she's looking forward to come back and work for the district, not only driving her out, but filling the eight-hour day.
Good.
All right, anything else? Francis.
Hi.
Sabrina.
Hi.
Angie.
Hi.
Tiff.
Hi.
Okay. Okay, I've got a recommendation for a maintenance worker, Zach, I don't know if. Ingram. Ingram, and it's a twenty-three dollars and one cent.
Is this a tier-one maintenance position? Tier-one is now CBL.
Right, yeah, tier-one, and he's gonna be working on all that, so.
Good, he's gonna be working on his CEO.
Okay, is that gonna take priority?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yes, I have sent that message.
Yes, please.
I think we've heard that message been sent to us, so, yeah, we're getting after it. So he's excited too, so he's interviewed for both.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approve Zach Ingram for maintenance for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented.
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion second, any public comment on this agenda item? Any further board? Francis.
Hi.
Sabrina.
Hi.
Angie.
Hi.
Tiff.
Hi.
Perfect. Kind of like this, just flying by super fast.
All right, what's next?
Substitutes.
9.03.
Wendy, if I remember right, we got Wendy Dennehy, or district substitute.
All right, I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approve Wendy Dennehy, district substitute, for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Second.
Okay, motion second, any public comment on this agenda item?
It's, it's.
Any further board? Francis.
Hi.
Sabrina.
Hi.
Angie.
Hi.
Tiff.
Hi.
Hi.
Just in case it goes down.
Is this, is this the? See, we kind of pulled that back there. Oh, right, okay. Well, there goes. Life's like a.
Mind your patient, it's working, just takes a long.
Yeah. So 9.04. Okay, so I will be making the recommendation to offer long-term subcontract to Alicia Steer once certification is completed by OPI, to meet the needs of having a certified instructor in the classroom for accreditation and classroom consistency while teacher is on maternity leave. So there you have it.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the long-term subcontract for Alicia Steer from ten fourteen twenty-five to eleven three twenty-five for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Second. Sorry, Angie, I'll just be quiet.
I have a motion second, any public comment on this agenda item?
Would you give the second too?
Tiff. Any further board? Francis.
Hi.
Sabrina.
Hi.
Angie.
Hi.
Tiff.
Hi.
Okay. Okay, 4.05, got another recommendation for a long-term subcontract, Laura Link. All situations you can read here is presented the same as the last one.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves a long-term subcontract for Laura Link from ten fourteen twenty-five to eleven nineteen twenty-five for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Second.
Angie, you're too delayed, Tiffany gets you every time.
I got Tiff for you to give it, so.
You've tried.
I have a motion second, any public comment on this agenda item? Any further board? Francis.
Hi.
Sabrina.
Hi.
Angie.
Hi.
Tiff.
Hi.
Okay. 9.06. Oh, there it is, okay. All right, so I will be recommending Wendy Dennehy for CHS Academic Olympics, CHS Close Up, CHS Multicultural Club, nine through twelve, and District Science Fair sponsor for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
I move the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Wendy Dennehy for the extracurricular fall rehires of CHS Academic Olympics, CHS Close Up, CHS Multicultural Club, District Science Fair for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Second.
Okay, motion second, any public comment on this agenda item? Any further board?
Was this opened up prior, or was this just like a?
It's a rehire.
It was opened up? Okay.
Because we rehired all those other spots way earlier in the year.
Okay, I just remember asking for those that have, the people that have retired to, to give the opportunity for in-district to, to fill those first, so, just, just curious, okay?
Okay, Francis.
Hi.
Sabrina.
Hi.
Angie.
Hi.
Tiff.
Hi.
Links are working now, are they? Yes, mine are still not working.
Did you go all and come back in?
I did.
Okay, that's good, go try. Give it a shot, can't get much worse. Yeah, mine are opening up right now. Might forget. 9.07, policy one-one-one-one.
Can I speak on that one?
Could you?
On this one, I apologize, because at the last meeting I told you guys it was the first, and it was actually the second. So our motion said you approved it on the first reading, but when I went back in my minutes, it actually was our second reading. So you're doing this one three times, and that was my fault last meeting, so if you'll just. It was either leave it off, or you guys just approve it again on the second and final reading, and we can just be done.
Yeah.
Okay.
I move the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the second and final reading.
Yes.
Third and final reading, of recommended update to policy one-one-one-one election.
Second.
Okay, motion second, any public comment on this? Any further board? Francis.
Hi.
Sabrina.
Hi.
Angie.
She might have got muted, because I muted everybody, so I did ask her to unmute herself, but she might not have been able to do that.
Tiff.
Hi.
Hi. What do you have about that, so? I need a repair. I'll use this, there we go. 9.08, policy twelve-ten. Okay, I think mine's gonna work here. All right, so I will be recommending, let's see, is this, should be.
Second.
Second reading, we got a clutch of seconds, now we're gonna have just one first. So policy twelve-ten, a second reading. You mean to read all of it? This is qualifications, terms, duties of board officers.
Steve can make motion.
Yeah.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the second and final reading of recommended updates to policy twelve-ten, qualifications, terms, duties, and board officers.
Second.
Okay, motion, and second, any public comment on this? Any further board? Francis.
Hi.
Sabrina.
Hi.
Angie.
She's still muted.
Tiff.
Hi.
Hi. All right, moving right along. 9.09, policy thirteen-ten. Yep, this one is district policy and procedures, second and final reading, recommendation.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the second and final.
Bob's do it, and just, you should scout for the bin for new people, like with Matt, we sent people, Derek and I have been working on that too, we sent people to get trained, so we have trainers ourselves in our district. And really, once we go through this with, with them, we should have the same thing. I don't think we're gonna have a need for any other safety purchases like this for a while.
I just want to know what we're budgeting for next year, because if you.
It's just that first page, that first page is the yearly, and then the other one is the. That's the very bottom, it says subscription total. Yeah, this. Eight thousand two hundred, and then it says one-time fees seventy thousand three eighty, three forty-eight. So the eight thousand two hundred would be the, like, the annual subscription, yeah.
Yeah, there was very little.
And then this says we will get a certified trainer. Somebody will come in and certify someone in-house to be a certified trainer.
Okay. Sounds good to me.
It's a great deal.
I move the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the Navigate three sixty purchase for school year twenty-five, twenty-six as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion second, any public comment on this agenda item? Any further board? Francis.
Hi.
Sabrina.
Hi.
Angie.
Hi.
Tiff.
Hi. Thanks for doing that, we've needed a safety update for a very while.
Good job. Yeah, thank you. You're welcome. Thanks to everybody that helped. 9.17, individual transportation contracts.
Sure, we had one family move into district that you were looking at, this is not the, it's not due to not having a bus driver, this family did move here, so that's the one you're looking at, the other ones will come later.
I move the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approve the elementary individual transportation contract for Hunter Coats for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Second.
Okay, motion second, any public comment on this? Any further board? Francis.
Hi.
Sabrina. Angie.
Hi.
Tiff.
Hi.
Very good. What's that? We'll move into reports. I didn't have any questions or comments on Ms. Nansels?
I had a, I had a comment on Mrs. O'Toole's. I love the data on there. I think that's great. The bot, on her report, she submitted her data, and I appreciate that. There's some good growth, I wish, so continue to monitor that and use that data in our PLCs too, when we do our smart calls, and thanks for the different tiers to monitor too. It's nice to see, like, the hard data behind stuff too, so I appreciate that, thank you. Thank you.
Also, good luck to Mr. Ferret, because he was nominated for Montana CTE New Teacher of the Year.
Was he?
And they're gonna announce the winner on the sixteenth, it says.
They'll find out Thursday evening, they'll find out Thursday evening.
Yeah, that's cool.
And then I don't know if he saw that, where Mrs. Patton and Mr. Briswell also received grants. Patton's actually was in the last one, and then Mrs. Donovan got the higher pathways grant again, and Mr. Briswell got the Montana contract.
Very cool.
Very good. Richard Kirchner, is there anything you need to add to yours?
I got, got the report all done and submitted, it was days old, it didn't go there, I mean, just going through that process of the annual performance review, it just kind of reiterated the stuff that we had talked about with the Indian Parent Committee. We want to beef up the violence prevention, the substance abuse prevention, college and career readiness stuff was something that was mentioned, and we're gonna try to address that a little bit more, we actually had a nice meeting with Miles Community College today, they had some course offerings that they have that might help us out there, so I think we're heading in the right direction.
Good, good. Did you have a big turnout for that parent committee?
I had nine people there.
Oh, good.
Which was a bit more than, in some years.
More than zero.
More than zero, yeah.
Jen, do you have anything to add to yours?
I do not. Mr. Bailey, I love the pony, the pine mute ponies, the horse at the top of yours, that was awesome.
Thank you.
Thanks for the volunteers too, for coming out and doing that fire protect, that prevention.
Yeah, that was really.
They do a good job every year of that.
Great assembly.
Yeah.
I heard all about him.
Me too. About the battery, did you hear about the battery starting in there?
I did. I don't think I heard that part, I actually didn't hear that part.
With that. Move on to yours. Okay, I wrote a lot, so trying to be quick and hit the high points, started out the, we got our first calendar committee meeting, so we're looking into the four-day week exclusively right now, and then we'll be following up on the twenty-ninth, so committee members have different questions, different issues that they're looking into and bringing back. I did attend the State Administrators of Montana Fall Conference in Bozeman, which was a great conference, just all, all learned a lot. One of them statewide assessment updates and considerations by OPI, they talked about where it's, what's going on with masks. One of the best speakers was Brad McCoy from Capturing Kids' Hearts, from the Flip, Flipping Group. He spoke on the three Rs of leadership, resiliency, relationships, and reframing. And we're sending a team with me, actually, which I am extremely excited about, going to Bozeman here next week for a couple days to, to actually be a part of this Capturing Kids' Hearts, I'll go, I'll go more into it after we, we attend it. But it was pretty neat, because they are giving us eight free spots, registration free. So that was neat, because they said they usually only do five in Montana, but I, I spent a lot of time talking to them with their exhibit, Jen can attest to that, she was with me, so she says, I, I guess I know how to do that, sell people cars if I need to, but anyway, it's, it's exciting right up there with the safety, I think, to improve achievement and teacher retention, it's a. It's a, it's a research-based program to do those kinds of things, so if you get a minute, they have a website, uh, check it out. Uh, also was a keynote speaker, Rachel, Rachel White, um, one, one topic was superintendent turnover and mobility and complex political, um, contexts, and just, she just really went into lots of studies, uh, really deep. She spoke a couple of different times on what's going on in Montana, she's, she's studied it quite a bit with, with Advent too, what's, what's going on. One of the only longitudinal studies, they said it's been done on Montana, so, uh, learned quite a bit there. Let's see, Leading Generational Shift by Jeff Utech, I would have liked everybody to have heard him, because he went into everything from the baby boomers to the alpha generation right now, and how different generations really view work, and what they value in work, and what they're looking for in jobs. And so, that will help us, uh, with our recruiting efforts, just some of the information there. Uh, he was an amazing speaker, it was really eye-opening, uh, what he brought up, because of the different generations we have working for us in Montana and in our district right now. And it really helps as a leader to get to know that, and how people view their jobs, and how people view education. He's an education specialist, so he's got a really cool website too. So, that was kind of like, just one of the minor, there's, there's a lot of takeaways, but that was kind of the general idea. And then I did, uh, stay on for the post-conference, and he spoke to, uh, the New Frontier in Curriculum Development, and then a look at AI curriculum and classroom material design by the Montana Digital Academy staff. Both, both talked about using AI with curriculum, um, so I've talked to Derek a little bit about that. It's, it's, it's pretty deep stuff, but, um, so one of my biggest takeaways actually, they highly recommend that you get your own AI server, so that you control everything curriculum-wise, everything through AI that kids do in your own district, and therefore, you haven't talked to them, stirred about it yet at all either. Uh, just, there's been so many things going on, but, um, safety, plagiarism, all those things can be really monitored closely when you have your own AI server, so just something I wanna bring up with Evan to have investigate, and they said they're actually really cheap, they're like a thousand bucks. It's pretty incredible.
And that's not to detect it, that's to facilitate the use of it?
Yeah. So, instead of all these different places, right, that you can't really monitor, you have your own, you monitor it, so kind of the general idea there. Which was a huge takeaway for me, everybody's learning about AI and how to use it, and how to make it, you know, um, should say safe, but so kids aren't cheating, and that kind of thing, and how to use it correctly.
Yeah, exactly.
Positive. Okay, how to use it correctly. Uh, I went to CMAS, I missed the first one, so I made it last week. Uh, Larry Crowder spoke, he's really helpful, um, there's many products that we get lots of discounts on. Kinda have a minimal membership with them, with Montana Rural Education Association, but he's just a wealth of knowledge, he's been in Montana forever. Actually, he knows Rich really well, so, well, your, their wives know, they were roommates in college, so they're really close friends. Yeah, he asks about Rich whenever I see him. Uh, he was at SAM, and he'll be at CMAS, or MSL, I'm going to, you're in Helena this week, but, um... Anyway, Sarah Music is her name, believe it or not, Regional OPI rep, it's kinda neat to have her there, she just takes questions and concerns, and she reports back. So, we didn't have that all year last year, she came, I think, to our last one with OPI. Um, then Ron, Ron Slinger, I did meet with him today, Jewel's in there, um, Derek was there, and we, we really looked at what they could offer us as far as our students with, um, lots of dual enrollment opportunities, um, different, different deliveries that they can give us, and some, quite a bit actually, that are free to our kids. And so, pretty excited about, about what they can do, um, to help us with our students, and just really, I think, meet the student needs, you get them excited, and... Uh, not that there isn't already some really good stuff going on, but they can add to that, Jewel had some really good ideas, um, that we'll just kind of continue to work on. Uh, let's see, so he had spoke about all those on Wednesday, he had just contacted me, I think, last Monday to, to come out and visit with us, wanted to come visit with us. Spent a lot of time on the bus driver issue, just, um, being involved with Rich, brainstorming ideas, Advent team, uh, how we were gonna fill those needs, if we didn't get applicants, but then we did get applicants, and interviewing, um, just being right there with those interview committees, um, and how to plan really long-term, um... Uh, let's see, well, that's another, yeah. Worked a lot on the long-term subs with our district, and found some ways to actually meet those needs, so that was kind of cool. You know, I think our principals, everybody's excited about that, real, real helpful for us, since we have so many FMLA leaves this year, so, um, we're getting there. Um, I did have kind of a neat idea, came through class, I took classroom personnel, just really meet with substitute teachers, really as a, as a district, trying to include them quite a bit in our, um, district, value them from gifts to meetings. So, I just had sort of an open house, as you could call it. Uh, I did put together a survey, I don't have the results yet, to survey everybody, um, at least asked them to survey that subs in our district. And so then, I did have a few people come to my office, um, after school once this month, and just, we talked for over an hour. They gave me kind of pros and cons, things that work, um, things they'd like to see changed. Um, that was really neat for me and for them too, they said it was really nice to just be asked, to be kind of, to be heard. So, that was, just, we learned some things, and already have, have at least one change, uh, put in place because of that, that I think will help, uh, get more subs, keep them happy. And then, I've been working with Advent, and he's been working with the Advent team now on just really revamping our website, to kind of make it our go-to spot. So, we're really, really looking to improve our relations with the community and beyond, um, so people can see the great things that are going on in our schools. Uh, really get it, I'd say organize a little bit better, um, more user-friendly, and then get a person or two within each school that has rights and abilities to, to help the principals update, so that, um, we can be ongoing with more news, more information, and, and so parents can really see what we're doing here, because there's a lot of great things going on in the schools that they don't hear about and, and can't see. But we wanna get that point where we're posting those things and just, um, just showing off what we do. There you have it, again.
Very good, thank you very much. Francis, Serena, Tiff, anything? Angie?
I'll say hi.
Nope.
Here, Julie, I second that, yeah.
All right, with that?